To order and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, gentlemen, remove your cap, stand as able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, nation, God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Hill?
Here.
Trustee Apey?
Yes.
Treasurer Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ossling?
Here.
Clerk Squires is here.
Thank you. Okay, we're to the point of comments on our agenda items only. At the beginning, for the first comment section, we asked you, if you have a comment, please step forward, have a seat, identify yourself. And again, in order for expediency there, we hope that you will abide by a three-minute situation, and so I open it up now for comments from the audience. Line up.
Morning.
Good.
Good morning.
In your office, they're racing around with posts.
Good, you can actually do that on those roads.
Yeah.
Yes. You have to have some skills. There you go. Uh. I'm really only here to set the record straight, and you have Glua dissolvement on the agenda. On February fifteenth, I received an answer in writing from the EPA Coordinator, disputing the opinions that Glua could not repurpose itself. Stated they could use that money for drinking water projects, stormwater management projects, or a number of other options. All those are quotes. February eleventh, I received another email from the same EPA Coordinator stating he had worked with the EPA's congressional liaisons to update their offices on where things stand from the EPA's perspective and how the changes in the project would work under normal circumstances. It was clear they had explained how repurposing would work, meaning that it was okay with the EPA to Representative Bergman and Senator Peters' office. On February eighteenth, I received an email from Lion Township's law firm. Bachmann Thau, they have been the MTA Michigan Township Association attorneys since inception. They have forty years of municipal law experience. I want to read this. This is his statement. PA two thirty-three sewage disposal to include all interceptor sewers, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, combined sanitary storm sewers, sewage treatment, and all, underlined here, all other plants, works, instrumentalities, and properties used or useful in connection with the collection, treatment, or disposal of sewage and industrial waste. As such, it's our firm's opinion that because of this broad definition of sewage disposal system in the act, referenced into Glua's articles, Glua may expend funds on any waste disposal system in its jurisdiction and is not limited to a publicly available sewer system. We do not believe the Articles of Incorporation need to be changed or modified to permit this spending. Excuse me. However, if Glua wants to modify the articles, that's fine. It will be on Garrish Township, not Lyon, if Glua dissolves while holding a million dollars that can be used for lake quality improvements. There will not be a Glua step sewer project, but I urge you today to hold off on dissolving Glua until Glua can meet again for the purposes other than a sewer, they're legal, and allowed by the EPA Water Quality Improvement Projects. The Lion members on the Glua Board are there at the behest of the Lion Township Board. The Lion Township Board wants the money to go to lake improvement projects that benefit the whole lake. So I hope you consider that when you make your decision today, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you. Anybody else with a public comment? Uh, line up, Phil, come on up, sure, absolutely. Public comment, if it's along the time one of the four items, I suspect you would. I suspect you want to talk about the Glua.
It is sort of. So I can recall vividly attending a public town hall meeting in Lion Township on or about September of twenty twenty-three, and I'm going to look up the details and provide a, hopefully, it was addressed in the Otten Lake Resort, so I'll provide a copy to you, but I can recall it vividly. A person by the name of Steve King spoke, and he was in the audience at the time, and he wasn't asked to speak, he just couldn't hold back. What he's, Steve King, by the way, is the Environmental Health Director of the Central Michigan District Health Department. And he's held that position for many, many years, but what he said was, he's no longer concerned about phosphorus. There's a lot of steps as far as the composition of fertilizer and that stuff. He's no longer, phosphorus is no longer a concern for him. What is a concern for him is nitrogen. And what he said was nitrogen is not stopped or slowed down at all by septic systems or septic fields or anything like that. And as a matter of fact, the average adult generates ten pounds of nitrogen every year. And that nitrogen is going into the groundwater and into the wells and into the lake. So to believe a septic system ordinances or control or anything like that is going to help Higgins Lake is just a smokescreen. It's a waste of money. The only solution is sewers. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Not seeing anybody. I guess I'm going to start around with the board. Jim, I'll start on your side. Unless you want me to go to the other side.
I have comments. They're more relevant to the items on the on the agenda. Can we, can I discuss them at the agenda?
We're about, after this, we're headed, yeah, we're in a preface right now. Obviously, we're here on item number one. Passing now the public comments section, and it is on the agenda for details of resolution being offered to begin the dissolution of Garrish-Lion Utility Authority. This follows a motion by the Garrish-Lion Utility Authority Board vote on at their last meeting of a five-to-one vote to ask the constituent townships to dissolve the corporation known as Glua. Go ahead.
Okay, it's going to take me a few minutes, but I put together some information before our last board meeting that I considered talking about it then and put it off until future, and that's, looks like today. I'm going to go through these notes that I put on here, but they're from a while back, but but I also wanted to start with Mr. Bertram, this letter that he that he referred to, and he said that PA two thirty-three defines a sewage disposal system to include interceptor sewers, storm sewers, sanitary, combined sanitary, storm sewers, sewage treatment plants, and all other plants, works, instrumentalities, and properties used in a useful connection with the collection, treatment, or disposal of sewage or industrial waste. To me, that sounds, that is then interpreted to mean that it could also include onsite septics. That's a stretch for me, but nevertheless, that's what that, that's what that letter says, so. Um. As we've gone through for the last several months, there's been a lot of work that's got, that everybody's been working on, and it seems like every time we turn around here, there are things that come up that seem to slow us down, and I just wanted to read through this. I'm not gonna gonna talk about it. I'm just gonna read it, and then you can interpret it as that word. Since the election, in addition to the tremendous amount of work that Superville, Supervisor Hill has shepherded along, the mess that Treasurer Anderson has cleaned up and got us on track. Trustee Apey has represented us throughout the community and through the county at the RTA Commissioners and other activities. Clerk Squires has worked with the Supervisor and Treasurer to, with restructuring and efficiency efforts in her office. The township's day-to-day operation is already better than it's been in a very long time. We continue to work on several particularly important issues within the township. While they've been getting this, getting us back on track, I've been assembling information, ideas, reviewing programs, identifying problems, and putting together a plan that can be implemented by the township, the health of Higgins Lake. Right after being elected, I began to see real details of where Glua stood. There had been a lot of negatives associated with the authority and transparency, and an overall lack of empathy for our residents was holding any real progress back. There's not much of a link between the board and Glua, so I asked the board to let me fill that missing connection. As a presentation of materials for the Health Higgins Lake came together, I had a closer involvement with Glua. I also spent more time watching what Lion was working on and what projects they were approaching. A pretty clear picture began to unfold. My first contact with Supervisor Bertrand was in an email where he suggested I had re-banded, rebranded, and expanded his stewardship plan. The reality is that none of that material that I have assembled has come from Lion Township. I have on two occasions asked the Supervisor for a copy of their stewardship plan and have yet to see it. I think he referred to it in his last presentation here at Garrish and said that they do not have one, but I'm not sure that's what he said. I have attended several of the Lion Township meetings since November. Most have referenced how they were granted a mandate during the election by the people of Lion, of Lion to rid them of the notion of a sewer. At those meetings, they rescinded the previously enacted SAD, made mention that they will not support any sewer, and certainly not a step sewer. They seem to state that no one in Lion wants a sewer, but most recently, the Lion Board directed the Planning Commission to reject the proposed water treatment plant and not approve any alternative sites. There's a general position that the sewer is not wanted or warranted. Supervisor Bertrand, Supervisor Hill, and I met on January twenty-ninth to discuss our common interests. We had a pretty productive meeting. Mr. Bertrand agreed that we had summarized the talking points and to get them to him. Before I could send my reply the next morning, he said that he had discussed this with his board, and there was no interest in what we had discussed. Once again, reinforcing the difficulty of getting any feel for ideas to consider. Mr. Bertrand contended that near-shore water testing is unreliable in determining the water quality trends. Mr. Bertrand declares that the Lion Township is going to fix some road ends and have erosion with road grates and ditching. He now appears to want to pursue green building. These are worthwhile projects, and I wish him well. However, they also need a master plan. They need buy-in from the proper stakeholders, permits and money. Current grant, as it is written, will not allow for these activities, arguably. Garrish Health of Higgins is in a professional approach, has contracted with the road, has contacted the Road Commission, and is in the process of working on a plan to address priority road end problems, the engineering of them, financing, and scheduling with the Road Commission. As for green building, I'm a certified natural shoreline professional. Full disclosure, I have let my certification lapse since retiring from the industry. I have experience in green building. It's a great idea, but very few sites on Higgins Lake qualify for green building under the MSU detailed program as green building for a variety of reasons. Glua has, through the significant efforts of their grant coordinator Susan Simak, applied for several grants. It's been reported that there have been conversations between representatives from Lion Township. The grantor have hindered the awards. There continues to be activity directly from Lion Township to the EPA with questions and comments that take the time of the EPA and require responses. The EPA has plenty to do without responding to random questions from the community. Personally, personally, I feel that there are questions about the grant. They should be submitted to the Glua Chair and a decision made as to whether it represents the questions to the UPA and not from a disassociated individual. Additionally, Mr. Bertrand has contracted the EPA on several occurrences in the last week with vague what-if questions about whether we can amend or grant the use of monies for the things other than what is specified in the project narratives. I don't disagree with the questions, but I do disagree with the method. Glua looks disorganized, inefficient, unprofessional with this outside inquiry. It's not known if the inquiries are from Lion Township Board, Mr. Bertram, or from Glua or the grantee. December twenty twenty-four, the Lion Board passed a resolution stating that they would not move forward with the proposed step sewer project and rescinded the Special Assessment District. In January, they passed a resolution stating that they would not pursue the Planning Commission's recommendations to rezone the treatment plant site, leaving the primary component for future system considerations moot. Trustee Monet recently stated that he is not in favor of the project as presented, and that telling people a sewer may happen if we use the money for more testing. This is what Mr. Bertrand wants to do. Mr. Monet suggested that it is quite disingenuous. Garrish has resisted reaching out to the AP for these specific reasons. It's the responsibility of Glua to make the inquiries. Anything other than the approach is unprofessional, productive, and detrimental to our future relationship with the EPA. Most recently, we've received an email from Mr. Monet suggesting that Mr. Bertrand does not represent the views of Lion Township. He does not speak for them. So what are we supposed to do? When I started to put together the Health Higgins Lake Initiative, I thought we could have a good, sound, working relationship between the two townships supporting Glua. I no longer believe we can. Our approach, our execution, our ideas, our personnel, even our term steering committee have been criticized by Lion Township officials on several occasions. Mr. Bertram stated that there is no need for a steering committee. Later, he stated, we will not cater to another bloated autocracy serving special interests or groups or personal agendas. There's no reference to exactly who the bloated autocracy is. This is just a sampling of the activity that surrounded the relationship between Garrish and Lion and Glua. The actual work product from some Glua people has been sabotaged in Washington. We cannot seem to develop the partnership that I was hopeful for. At the last work session, Treasurer Anderson announced that we would be budgeting twenty thousand dollars as seed money to assist in the effort to get our projects underway. We appreciate the community's support for this work and look forward to years of positive steps. Mr. Bertrand has suggested Garrish Township will be responsible, again, today, it sounds like, will be responsible for the loss of any grant monies, not them. I'm quite sure that there is plenty of blame to go around, but Garrish has never suggested that Glua should be dissolved. I wrote this a couple of weeks ago, that Garrish has never suggested that Glua should be dissolved, Lion has. That's not a relationship that I feel is appropriate for our residents. We will not, we will work tirelessly in search of the new or repurposed grant funds through the immense talents of our own people to help with the health of Higgins Lake. We look forward to even more supportive of the initiative and folks to make this community directive. If projects are within the initiative, are developed, and need to overlap into the geography of Lion, we will make every effort to make it so. If at some point Lion Township wants to partner in an effort, we are open. For now, it is my feeling that Garrish and Lion should pursue their individual approach as to what they feel is the best for their community. I don't take this position lightly, and it's not happy day for me. There have been a lot of work by extraordinarily talented people here, and I am proud to have worked with them. Much positive has come from their efforts. We have learned a lot. We are not giving up on anything. In fact, I am more motivated to keep this initiative moving than ever. I look forward to working with the good people of the township over the next months and years and move our community forward and identify areas that will help the health of Higgins Lake. I invite anyone interested to review the high-level PowerPoint presentation on the Garrish website and an overview of the Health of Higgins Lake Initiative. I thank the folks all around the state, or all around the lake, and welcome anyone that is interested in participating in a steering committee or any of its subcommittees to bring these projects to life, to fill out an application and get involved. The only criteria are that you remain unbiased and want to work as a team toward the health of Higgins Lake. To do nothing is not an option. That's the summary of where I feel we've been over the last couple of months, I guess. It seems like every step we take, there's more stuff that gets in the way of us moving forward than we're able to accomplish with the things that we've written down, the things that really need to be done. So with that, I guess I just put it back to you.
Mr. Anderson, do you have any comment at all?
Well, Jim said a mouthful, but we're in an unfortunate situation. Glua's already voted. Uh, I think it was five-to-one to disband. I have to question whether there would even be an interest in continuing with Glua if there wasn't a billion-dollar grant out there. And that, and that's even, that's not even necessarily on the table yet. That's over here that might happen. So I, I agree that this is probably the right thing to do. Is to dissolve it.
There you go.
It is sad. It's really sad. Wow, Jim, that was, you hit it right on, in my opinion, you hit it right on the head of things that have occurred that have brought us to this place, and I feel so, it's so unfortunate for so many people have put so much work into this already, and it is, it's really sad that it come to this, but if you don't have workability and if people and, and, you know, Paul, I get where you're coming from. You know, a million dollars could go a long way. We have to be a team on this. You know, going rogue doesn't work in this situation when we have two townships, you know. It's just, it's sad, and I'm glad you put it so eloquently, and I'm really glad that you're here. So. I, I, I think if you're at a stake point, something's got to happen, so there we go.
And I personally don't see that changing anytime soon, just based on what actions have been. I think we're, we're doing what we have to do right now.
Okay. Jim, you submitted most everything that I have. I wrote a few, I wrote little notes here, if you will. But in the alderman, and this, you have to have a full-scale partner moving forward in the in the PA two thirty-three discussion of actually arriving at, that's part of the mission, for Glua at a sewer. And it's eminently clear, as evidence, and I'm not getting into a Lion Township blaming thing here. I have said numerous times, I respect whatever Lion Township feels is right for their community. I would never attempt to undermine anybody's. I personally have never been at one of their Township Board meetings. Not to sway, not to pontificate, not to give our side of the fence, if you will, because I think there's too much wins and they end, and in the ultimate end, I think ultimately, I'm always that guy that I, I look at things about you, you can deconstruct it to the legal piece or what is ethically and morally correct, and the only people that should have ever been talking to Washington should have been Glua and Glua's chair and the grant writer themselves, and the constituent townships, you should have fettered information up through them in order to ask about any of this repurposing money or otherwise. I get the sense that there's just too many hands in the proverbial pie, basically, and I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, there's a thousand dollars or a million dollars, but there's no million dollars unless you could possibly rework things around. Even if you got some money, I'm terribly concerned at this point that, that you'd be, we'd be arguing between what septic tests are appropriate on either side of the lake, and I don't want any of that, and I, again, I don't begrudge any community of having their own thought processes and moving that way. I've witnessed it. I've heard it. I've heard what Jim has described, and I just, I just think that's, doesn't pass the real ethical test for me. So that, that being said, I just don't think that a partnership, continued partnership is feasible. And, and I don't want to see any more time. I can tell you, this has been absolutely exhausting, and I know Mr. Bertrand can testify that it's absolutely exhausting. It changes every moment because everybody's opinion changes every moment because everybody's passionate about it, and everybody can see that you got to do something because nothing is not an option, so. I just want to see, you know, for locally here in Garrish Township, for sure, the Health of Higgins Lake Steering Committee moving forward and, and working towards doing something rather than participating in this constant battle of rhetoric. And so with that, I'm going to close my comments out. Any further comments, board, before we take a look at our, our resolution? Anybody? Okay, I'm, before I ask for a motion and offer, I'm going to read Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash oh-two dash two-zero dash oh-seven entitled Process to Dissolve Garrish-Lion Utility Authority. This would say, at a regular meeting of Garrish Township Board, Roscommon County, Michigan, held at Garrish Township Hall, twenty-nine ninety-seven East Higgins Lake Drive, Roscommon, Michigan, forty-eight, six fifty-three, on the twentieth day of February twenty twenty-five. Whereas, the Garrish-Lion Utility Authority was established by Garrish Township on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and Lion Township on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Pursuant to Public Act two thirty-three of nineteen fifty-five, MCL one twenty-four dot two-eight-one, and their sequentials, when Articles of Incorporation were adopted by each township as a constituent, constituent municipality for the purpose of exploring the possibility of acquiring, owning, improving, enlarging, extending, or operating a sewer service system to address wastewater collection and treatment and declining water quality in or near Higgins Lake and impairments the project. Whereas pursuant to MCL one twenty-four point two-eight-three, the Glua Articles of Incorporation include the following provisions. In Article Three, purpose provided is, quote, "The purpose of this authority is to acquire, own, improve, enlarge, extend, maintain, or operate sewage disposal system to provide such services in a designated area," and then in parentheses, again, parents, "the service area," in quotes, "in accordance with the provision of the Act." The term, in quotes, "sewage disposal system," as used in these articles, shall be as now or hereafter defined in the Act. In Article Five, Term of Existence Provided, quote, "The authority shall continue in existence perpetually or until dissolved by act of the parties or by law." Provided, however, that the authority shall not be dissolved if such dissolution could operate as an impairment of any of its bonds, obligations, or contracts. See, in Article Nine, Board Meetings Provide, among other things, in quotes, "The Board shall have the right to adopt bylaws." See, in Article 9, Board Meetings Provide, among other things, in quotes, "The board shall have the right to adopt bylaws governing its procedures and regulating the affairs of the authority that are not in conflict with the terms of the Act. Any other statute or these articles, bylaws must be approved by the governing bodies of both constituent municipalities before coming effective." D, in Article 12, Contracts Provide, "The authority and its constituent municipalities may enter into a contract or contracts provided for the acquisition, purchase, construction, improvement, enlargement, extension, operation, or financing of a sewage disposal system as authorized and provided in the Act." Whereas the bylaws for Garrish-Lyon Utility Authority were approved by Garrish Township on September 14, 2021, Lyon Township on September 15, 2021. Whereas Gua has successfully applied for and received a watershed council grant in the amount of $40,000 as well as other personal and organizational donations, most of all of which it is believed to still hold, and has been awarded a federal community project funding grant in the amount of $1 million for those purposes specified in the grant applications. Whereas on or about December 2, 2024, fellow Gua constituent municipality of Lyon Township adopted Resolution Number 2024-007 titled, and it quotes, "Determination on Advancing the Construction of a Step Sewer Near Higgins Lake," end quote, and resolved as follows. Number one, the Township Board will not move forward with the proposed step sewer project as has been presented. Number two, the Township Board will not move forward with the next step of the special assessment process for the step sewer project. And number three, all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith shall be and same are hereby rescinded, end quote. Whereas on January, on or about January 14, Garrish Township adopted a resolution to rescind its June 14, 2022 Resolutions 2022-06-14-01 and 2022-06-1402, which initiated the special assessment process to fund sanitary sewer improvements around Higgins Lake. Whereas on or about January 29, 2025, fellow Gua constituent municipality Lyon Township adopted Resolution Number 2025-010, which stated the Lyon Township Board, quote, "Will not pursue the recommendation of the Planning Commission as required by the statute to rezone the proposed Gua Treatment Plant Site from C-1 Commercial to M-1 Light Industrial and quote, again, the Lyon Township Board is not in favor of the step sewer treatment plant site as presented," end quote. Whereas while the Garrish Township Board still believes options need to be further explored to prevent the further decline in the health and water quality of Higgins Lake, Gua cannot reasonably proceed with a sanitary sewer system without the support of both constituent townships or, excuse me, municipalities. It appears the purpose for the creation of Gua, i.e. sanitary sewer system for wastewater collection and treatment, have been eliminated. Now, therefore, in order to eliminate any residual liability to either the constituent municipalities due to the elimination of the reasons for creation of the Gua, it is recommended that Garrish Township initiate the necessary steps to dissolve Gua by March 31, 2025. Any action shall include, but not limited to ensuring the return of any funds held by Gua, which were donated to the authority in full, or if not, all donated funds are available in pro rate shares to the donor or donors after payment of any outstanding expenses. That is the resolution before the board, and at this time, anybody else have any final comments before I call for a motion to approve that as presented?
It's resolution authorizes the board, authorizes the supervisor to initiate between now and March 31 the implementation of the dissolution.
Yeah, it doesn't specifically say me, but in our, in our chart, I am responsible for going to the township attorney on any legal matters. This is clearly going to be a legal matter. And as I have, since I got here, I always take a board member with me so that there's none of just me going someplace to, to have this. There's always verification.
The board will kick that off, will direct you or direct somebody to go see the attorney between now and March 31. That's what I'm, just to reiterate.
The next stop after this, you mean?
I'm sorry?
Like the next stop?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I would take my cue from this, and I would, I would make an appointment with our attorney.
Between now and?
Yeah, between now and then. And obviously, Jim, I probably, and I don't think I'll get any argument here on the board, but probably take you. You're the most other knowledgeable piece on that, and to go with me to the attorney's office.
Yeah.
As you have in the past on, on these issues that, ever since you got on the board.
The summary of this resolution is that it gives the authorization to go to the attorney sometime between now and March 31 to get the thing.
That's correct.
Doesn't dissolve anything today. It doesn't tell the attorney till the legal.
To initiate it by March 31, 2025. That's correct. Any other board member have any question, clarification, or otherwise?
Oh, I'm glad you asked that.
Okay, here and done, then I need to offer this forward, a motion to support Resolution Number 2025-02-20-07, Process to Dissolve Garrish-Lyon Utility Authority. Is there a board member willing to make that motion? So moved, moved by Jim Anderson, Treasurer Anderson, any support?
I'll support.
Clark Squires. I'll open it back up for any discussion further by the board. Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Clark Squires, yes. I. Trustee Ossling?
Yes.
Supervisor Hill?
Yes.
Treasurer Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoppie?
Yes.
Okay, we have five yays and no nays and no abstentions, so that I declare that that has been approved today's date. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion this morning, board, on this. A lot of us did this lightly. It's just, I'm part of the saddened of how does that sound? Okay, on to our next item for business, number two. We have before us, as you know, we have, we've had several, shall I say vacancies from committees or had to rework committees because expirations had been done. Number two, reviews and appoints a representative to the Roscommon District Library Board. The vacation, or I mean, the open, open position there was by a resignation of our previous representative, Joyce Ballard. And we opened that up for applications. We received two applications. We, the clerk, do you want to tell us about them?
Yeah, we had an application from Larice Tanner, who is involved with the library now on personal level, and from Ethan Brand. We received, I think, three different applications for the ZBA position that we have. Two, Ethan Brand, Larice Tanner. Both come with a lot of experience and both bring different things to the table. I think everybody has been able to go over the applications.
Any board members, you know, we've all seen the applications. And so I will open it up for obviously discussion, but thank you for framing that, Michelle, and we'll open that up. Anybody have any comments at all or willing to make a motion to what you want to do?
I have comment. I don't personally know Ethan Brand, so it's a little difficult for me to be not a little biased because I do know Larice. I've known her for a lot of years. She's still very involved with the community. She's been like a, she's been an election worker here at the township for years. Like I said, she participates in, in the programs that the library has, so she's very familiar with how they run. So I'm definitely, I'm in very much support of having Larice take that position.
Is anybody, have you had any conversations with library folks at all?
I have spoke with Colleen, yes.
And was there any recommendations or is it just?
She would like to see Larice because Larice has come in and spent time at the board meetings and is familiar with how they operate, what they're responsible for.
Board members?
I read both of the applications. If you read them, I, I would not be able to make a recommendation because they both are qualified. I would say, I had a conversation with Colleen Dyke as well, and who's the library or the district library? Whatever their title is, Director, Director. So yeah. Larice was actually there well, forward, but I guess I would also put this out there. This is only the fill, fill of term that's vacant, and in one year, we're going to be looking at yeah, we're going to be looking at this again. So I'm comfortable with, with, with either one, but I would say I would respect that if the, if the director, the library board have already put somebody forth, and she's been operated or working within the library, she makes logical sense.
I'm hearing Larice here, so.
Ditto. I know Larice, she's a little spitfire. She does, she gets her done, and I think she's a great candidate. I agree, Jim.
Okay, I'm hearing two, so we'll, we'll, we'll ask for a question. And that question is that make a motion to approve or that, or excuse me, that we appoint, board appoint Larice Tanner to the Roscommon Area District Library Board, Garrish representative for the term ending 1231 of 2025, which indeed does fulfill what Joyce's term was. Anybody willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll support that.
Any further discussion, folks? They not hearing any? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose the same, motion carries. Number three is another review, appoint, reappoint for Garrish Township Board, zoning board of appeals. We received three applications. We have two actual seats open and one alternate available.
Right.
And so will you give us a framework, please?
Um, we have Barb Stoffer, who is a, a reappoint. She's been on the ZBA for quite a few years. She would like to continue on. We also have Terry Newton, who was our trustee here, and he also comes with a background, a strong background of, of being able to fill that position. And then we had Mr. Ethan Brand. And again, personally, I don't know him, but he, he's on paper, he looks great. So we had those three for the, the three positions. Two are full-time, and the one is a alternate position.
Any discussion beforehand, folks?
Is there another application in that folder?
Not for ZBA.
Okay, so. So we have two.
We have two regular spots that would, one is going to.
One is the reappoint.
The, the reappoint would expire, that's Barbara Stoffer, if we do it at 1231 of 26. And there are going to be separate motions, but the, the next one for the open seat, actual seat on the board expires 1231 of 27. And then an alternate appointment would also be for three-year, expiring 1231 of 27. So those are the, those are the three positions that.
They got Barb, Terry.
Barb would be a reappointment. She expressed interest in doing so. The next one would be a vacancy. Jim Lippert used to have it. He has advised he's not going to be interested in any longer and, and declined, if you will, to reapply. And that is a, a full seat. That's one of the five sitting, okay? And then, of course, the last one is the alternate piece.
And that's a three-year term.
And that is three years, well, till 27. So you want?
Has Terry sat on this board before?
Terry sat on this board before. Before you, Terry was on the Planning Commission. And I think years ago, he was.
Yeah, years ago, I think he may have been. I do know that he was a former employee here at the township, working in the building and zoning with Bob Yaski years ago. Dealing directly with the zoning ordinance itself. Obviously, there's a wealth of knowledge there. That vacancy, of course, was, you had resigned that piece, and we accepted your, your resignation, Mary Jo, from that board. So let's go with number one. I would entertain a motion to the board of reappoint Barb Stoffer to a three-year term on the zoning board of appeals for the term ending 1231 of 26. Is there anyone willing to make that motion?
So moved.
Got moved. Who's supporting?
I'll support.
Okay, so we got Jim O. Got Clark Squires. Any further discussion on the reappointment of Barb? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same? Motion carries. On to the B portion of this, or the next portion. Looking for a motion that the board appoint, and somebody can fill the name in for the regular piece, if you'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, I'd make a motion. Terry, Terry's got tons of experience in the office as the zoning administrator. I worked with him for years on the Planning Commission, and he's expressed an interest in this. He'll do a great job at it. I'd nominate, if this is still open for, open for nominations?
Yeah, well, what we're going to do is, so you would make a motion that the board appoint Terry Newton to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term ending 1231 of 27. You're willing to make that motion?
Yes.
I would need support for that in order to have a vote.
I'll support that.
Look, Mary Jo. Only because you're leaving, or do you?
Like, like President Trump, I want the smartest people that know the most about whatever.
We're not going to go there. Oh, boy. All right, very good. We have a motion on the table. We have support on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose the same, motion carried. And so this will be Terry the notes. And then lastly, we have the alternate position available, and we do have an applicant, Ethan Brand, who put in an application for, you know, obviously, the zoning board of appeals, so. I, I would entertain a motion that the board appoint Ethan Brand to the zoning board of appeals alternate position for a three-year term. Anybody willing to do that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll support that.
And Mary Jo. Any further discussion, board? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same, that motion carries. Thank you. By the way, I, thank you for people, ever, for the applications. Look,
Yeah.
I know when we started trying to get these things back in order again here, under my term here, that when you, anytime you put out some rules about appointments or applications, sometimes people just don't follow through. So I really thank everybody for following through with this, so that we can do that. And we're on to number four. Number four is a, we'll need a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign the annual contract for the Roscommon County for assessing an equalization. This, you all got the documentation I got sent to me. And I don't know, somebody else can speak more to it, obviously, but it's prior, it's prior to me, if you will, other than I know that there's, like everything else, there's an increase because of the United States Postal Service increased their stamps to 73 cents. And I think the parcel is still, per parcel is still the same. And so, Jim, why don't you go ahead and define this for the group, please?
I'll throw it on the new guy. I, I'll tell you what my understanding is of this. You basically have three options that they provide, and, and you can't, really can't even consider no services, which is option three, just because you need their services. They provide that to pretty much every township. In the past, you've, I believe, used option A, which is where they, you know, take care of it. It's a dollar fifteen per parcel this year, and then they take care of the mailing, because if we didn't do that, we'd be responsible to mail out all those notices. And really, when you consider the cost, the 73 cents per parcel, you're not paying much over what you'd spend. Yeah, and by the time you put the envelopes and everything, it's really kind of a no-brainer. So, you know, my recommendation would be to stick with the same service that you had in the past year under proposal. under proposal or option A, um, which I think you provided last year. The charge was um, about eighty-one little over eighty-one hundred dollars last year. And it'll be a little bit more, which we did budget. I think we budgeted nine thousand in our line item.
Yeah, it looks like it'll, we'll, we'll make it for sure.
Yeah, so that would be, that would be my recommendation. We don't have an assessor that only comes in one day a week under their contract. If you had to do this, you'd be to have to muster up all the stuffing. Yeah, you you'd end up.
We're gonna pay for it.
You're not paying very, very small amount over what it would just cost. Plus, there's some extra services you get with proposal A, like your option A with this, the L forty twenty-nine gets prepared by them rather than us, so.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, I'll, I'll throw this out on the back deck over there, uh, um. After this, it's a, option A is a full service and it's got many bulleted items for everything it provides. And for everything that it provides, a dollar fifteen a parcel seems to be quite reasonable, uh, as opposed to trying to pay that. So any other comments by board before we call for a motion? You're none? I would entertain a motion uh, that the board authorize a supervisor to sign the annual contract for assessing and equalization with Roscommon County, option A, at a cost of a dollar fifteen parcel plus seventy-three cents parcel postage per mailing. So I would take a motion. Jim?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Jim Anderson. Sport ordered by Jim Osling. Any further discussion, board? All right, hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Pose the same, motion carries. Very good. Uh, we're now down to uh, further public comments uh, at the end of the agenda here. Everybody wish to make one? Sure, I'll give you, you get one bite of the apple each one.
Uh, just a couple things. I mostly agree uh with your quotes on me, Mr. Osling. I I don't agree with some of the conclusions, but I do look forward to working with you in the future on the commonalities. Try and leave the differences somewhere else while we work on the things that we agree on.
It's good to hear.
I do my due diligence in trying to represent Lion Township. I asked for answers in writing. I uh, Supervisor Hill nailed it. The cacophony of rumors and opinions swirl around a supervisor's head to no end. Uh, when I used to, uh, for twenty-five years, I did contract negotiation and represented about eight hundred people in a union, uh, same situation. I got into realizing that things needed to be in writing in order to move forward, and you cannot do business on conversations and phone calls. In the future, I'll always stand on uh, on documents and writing. I will always seek to dispute opinions with the facts in documents and writing, or confirm the opinions. Uh, this is only one chapter in the relationship between Lion and Gharish. Um we do have commonalities. Let's find them. I will enter into those discussions willingly. But I will always be pursuing written documents and if the issue is that I do that, I I'm telling you now that that's what you can expect out of me. As needed, uh, for decisions, especially when you're close to making important decisions. So again, I thank you for all of your efforts. I think there's a decent future out there for us. Uh, in representing uh, Lion Township and doing my due diligence. I will do my best to represent them with proof of the facts and not the opinions. So thank you for your time. And I do have to run off my other day, Jeff.
Unfortunately, Paul just left. Um, so I'm wondering, what's the next step? And uh as you know, um, Mr. Bertrand holds dual positions. One, he's a member of the GLUA board. And then he's also a supervisor in Lion Township. And uh, the GLUA board passed a resolution recommending the dissolution of itself. So I believe Paul has a responsibility to represent GLUA independently of his supervisor position or his own personal opinions. He has the rep, he has the uh, responsibility to express that uh, recommendation, that resolution that GLUA made to dissolve, dissolve itself and make that position, whether or not he believes it or not. Um, I hope he can do that and I uh hope he can do it before March thirty-first and we get some kind of resolution be- between the two townships on it. Uh, I'd hate to see one township come out with a position and the other not take a position, basically. So, thank you very much.
We'll see. We have, we've left it. Moments in time there. Um, I don't know if the GLUA board will be able to the the situation you find it is very, very difficult. Uh, you know, we have done everything the GLUA board asked us, but we appointed our other half uh, that was recommended by Mr. uh, Martin Wettler. And as we go, that other half, we, we still, it needs vacant in mind, however, we do have an hour's position still open. Are still sitting with uh, Dave Hall uh, on that piece. And so, uh, you know, I, I really don't know. I asked outright and uh, in, and I wish he was here because you and I were uh, talking with Paul in my office, and I asked him, you know, all right. And um, he didn't seem to take that with enough this time. Did I, am I wrong there? He said it wasn't necessary at that time. You see, for me, this is where the problem. I'd rather be open, be uh, absolutely open and honest about this. What I you, you can't have it all in a fortification as well with uh, the decision of the township, and clearly to say that it doesn't want participants. It's really a zero-sum game at that point. And it becomes what he talked about, the cacophony of what swirls above my head. Every day we have a meeting, every day we post a meeting, every day whatever. Uh, my, my email box jangles off, my phone jingles off, and I try to get a peek into what's in the future and everybody seems to want different things. And when you negotiate yourself to that point, I, I don't know what to do. Yeah, and so I, the answer is, is that this clearly says, uh, uh, March thirty-first. Um, and uh, and I don't know, I, I asked this morning, when is GLUA the next meeting? Yeah, I admit, I don't keep track of everybody's meetings. I've kind of been great things. And you're criticized, they don't get along on that website. I took the job, but I'm not. Thank you, Phil.
You know, uh, that regards to your question, but but before I want to preface this a little bit. You know, one of the issues that both said and maybe not specifically, but with, when Lion removed their board members and on GLUA and put their own on there, it no longer became no longer was a single entity out there moving forward, representing both township. It now it was it was a stacked deck with, with, you know, there were, and and there was way too much uh, correspondence and activity going on by individual members within your group representing their own interest or their own township's interest without the GLUA's interest as a whole, which is undermines the whole idea of what you were trying to do. And uh, you know, to answer your question, I think that, you know, you had your resolution. I'm, you know, Cheryl's here, she's writing this all down. They know what you guys did at your last board meeting. But it wouldn't be a bad idea for you to put a formal letter to Lion Township and Gharish as to with the copy of your resolution. You know, fought with, with the expectation of a follow-up. I think once you meet with our attorney and uh you know, this copy of our resolution and a cover letter should come from him to their township uh, board with the expectation of them to act on that as well, based on your prior resolution. So how to dissolve an authority is something, you know, I've done, worked forty years in this stuff, but I've really not had to deal with anything like this. So I doubt if attorneys or anybody else and, you know, everybody, there's a roomful of experts. When this place is full, everybody's got opinion and they're all expert in their own realm. And and uh, but the reality is, we've just got to go through the steps, follow the, the, the legal path and and finish this off so we can move forward in a very productive way um, to continue to take care of the health of the lake. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
John Barta, Lion Township. Um, first of all, I, I do want to thank the board. I do want to thank GLUA. This is a sad day for me, um, as a Lion Township resident. Um, and um, you know, GLUA and a sewer, the health of Higgins is really paramount for many people. Um, there's, some of you folks um, have been to some of our meetings, but there is a very large contingent of Lion Township property owners who really were, are very interested in a sewer. They continue to be interested in a sewer. Um, however, they are certainly committed to the health of Higgins, so in any other um, tasks or initiatives that may be um, coming about, um, there are certainly a lot of people who are interested. But um, I, I would like to make sure that this board understands that there are a lot of people in Lion Township who do not feel the same way that um, our um, governmental representatives uh, portray the majority of the people. They're telling, there, there are a lot of people who um, do not homestead in Lion um, who worked on the sewer. Um, and there are a lot of people who are very interested in all of the things that are going on. So we support this board, we support whatever new um, entity may be created. Um, and so uh, we want you to understand that while you may feel like you're the only, you're the east side of the lake and by yourself. I don't, I want to assure you that there are a lot of people on the west side of the lake who support the kinds of things that GLUA is doing. The health of Higgins Lake and all of the other things that are happening. So um, I the silence from that side of the lake is deafening, but I do want to make sure that you folks know there are a lot of people here who are, who are supportive of what you're doing. And that's really what I wanted.
John, if I could ask you, I, I guess on behalf of our board as well, we are hoping we did, you know, today's actions weren't to chase good people off. Today's actions um, unfortunately are what they are, but um, we, we, we are committed as a board and we've shown that for the health of Higgins Lake. I know that the word has been kind of um, bannered about a steering committee. We're not looking to steer anything. We're just looking to get a group of professionals together. Um, I am not a scientist. I am not an engineer. I, I don't profess to be and I never will be. Uh, and so I am hoping that people like yourself and other people that think there might be some commonality that we can um, you know, get please put some of those, and by the way, that application process is so very simple. It's just whatever. Uh, and uh, we, we need to fill positions on that. We announced them, they're out on the website. Uh, I think we got one back in so far. They go into the clerk's office, so I don't, I don't see them until I, we have to deal with them, obviously, but.
But you don't have to be a Gharish resident.
No, I, I, I'm looking for good folks that have participated. Uh, but again, I, I do say this, and I will echo Jim Osling's uh, statement, which is look, we want people to come with no bias, no whatever, uh, let's, it's the, 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 the concentration is on our our, I call it our economy, because Higgins Lake is our economy, period. And so I hope, um, and and hope you guys can talk around and we're, you are welcome uh, from the Lion Township uh, perspective or side of the lake. I hate to include this side, but it is what it is. So you are, you are, you fo- you folks are certainly welcome, and I know that uh, that Mr. Osling uh, is, is much appreciative of people that will step forward.
Yeah, just acknowledge what John said about the people in Lion Township. Uh, there's a lot of, you know, very good people with very interested in in the right.
Done a lot of work.
We certainly look forward to the working with, you know, anybody that wants to work on ours.
Thank you, Jeff.
You bet. We're looking for good partnerships. So thank you, and good neighbors.
Thank you. Uh, any?
You know, it's a passionate day when you hear from both Bardas, right? I'm Martha Barta, so. And I know I'm preaching to the cro- to the choir, but it is just still astonishing to me that now uh, you know, Paul Bertrand feels that the million, I don't want to let the million dollars go either. Who wants to let a million dollars go? But, you know, um remembering that he was the person and his group personally contacting Bergman's office and telling him, nobody nobody wants this money. And um, you know, I, I really applaud you for saying look, there is one group that should be contacting these offices, and it's they don't have time to deal with all of these different emails and different things. That's so, and then Supervisor Hill, I heard you say that you believe that Lion Town Township needs to do what all the residents of the township want. Now, obviously, you're, you can't get a hundred percent consensus. But it's, that's what the negotiations is all about. And personally, I feel that Mr. Bertrand has a personal agenda that he is going to carry through on regardless of what the residents say. Because let's remember, there were more than fifty percent of the property owners in Lion Township who signed a petition in favor of a sewer, or not necessarily in favor of a sewer, in favor of investigating further a sewer project. So in many ways, I don't trust his um, agenda. Because I think it's a personal agenda. I really appreciate the way you're, you five people work together. You are honest about your comments. You say your opinions. Um, you're not afraid to say, mm, don't always agree with that one. But um, so I really appreciate your working together. Your transparency is very obvious. One thing I heard you say Supervisor Hill was that you take another board member with you when you go talk to the attorney's office. Excellent idea.
This was on the board, it's not my board.
Yeah, and it shows that you are willing to let everybody know what's on the table. And I really appreciate that. I would love for Lion Township to get some lessons in that. And because again, I say, I don't, I don't trust Mr. Bertrand with anything other than his personal agenda. But maybe, you know, we'll get there. And I really appreciate the moving forward on the health of Higgins Lake. We'll be there with you. Even if we are the ugly stepsister.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I, uh, the comment, I think you were, uh, the first one was, is that, look, I, I respect their right in Lion to do whatever they feel is necessary with their citizens. And uh, I'm hoping that what, that apparently it must be a, a silent majority um, that will come to the table and i- i- and express their opinions accordingly, so their officials can review. Right now, um, it, it, I, it the words being used are it, it's the mandate of their people, the election uh in Lyon. And then I can't refute that. I mean, sure, the election happened and what happened, happened. But uh, at the end of the day, I, I've these guys here have heard me say individually that I, I I pride myself in wanting to be the adult at the table. And uh, we've got to, we've got to piece us together and move on properly. And so I appreciate everybody's patience and comments. Anyone else? Okay, um, anybody else here?
I want to make one comment. I just want the GLUA, any, anybody attached to GLUA and all our supporters to know if y'all didn't start this project, who knows how long it would take? I mean, really, the, the end result, in my opinion, uh, the end result of having sewer is going to be a lot of your work. So your work and the years that you've put in here on this are not for naught. It, you started it, you started the wheels. And uh, and hopefully you help us continue to keep them rolling down the road. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I know it's sad to dissolve this, but I'm looking for some bigger, better, I mean, I don't know. Success.
Thank you for articulating that, Mary Jo. Anyone else? Hearing none, I would indicate, or excuse me, I would take a motion to uh adjourn this meeting at ten ten. No move. Uh, Jim Anderson, second, supported by Jim Ossling. And uh, any further discussion of whether we should adjourn? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose the same. Motion carried. Thank you and thank you to the audience for your interest and participation this morning.